Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals. It's October 22nd, 2024. Before we begin tonight's public hearing, I would like to familiarize you with some of the ground rules on how we conduct the hearing. In Gardner, four members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in a sequence in which they appear in the public notice. The board is under no obligation to adhere to that sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by agent returning. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance requests within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision regarding special permits within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. All four members out of five of the board must vote in favor of the variance of special permit to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of the board is provided for in Chapter 48 of the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance of special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of these in the county or district. Board request that each person identify himself or herself as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearings, I'm going to start to my right is Lori Witter. Next is Richard Hanks. To my left, Mel Cornet, and far left, Dave Antea, and myself, Ray Alfonas Chair. The meeting will be taped and videotaped. Does anybody object to the videotaping? For the record, no objection. The board request that all cell phones be silenced to prevent any interruptions during the hearing. Okay, so let's begin. First of all, I'm going to read the agenda for this evening. It's dated October 22nd, time 6:30. It's in the council chambers, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session or meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of the equipment so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the clerk. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. Will anybody be doing any recording, et cetera? We have shown none. The agenda for tonight. Case 22...
Just want to change the sequence.
Oh, okay. It's a continuance, special permit. Jonathan Bombachi, 163-165 Pine Street. Parcel ID R22-6-8. Special permit violation. Case 2024-09-02. Continuance, variance. Donald Foster II, Zero Talcott, parcel ID M17-8-8. Build a single-family house. Case 2024-09-01. Continuance, variances. Variance Donald Foster II, Zero Talcott Ave., parcel ID M17-8-8. Relief on side yard setback. Then we'll go into announcements and correspondence. Then it'll be acceptance of and/or corrections to meetings of prior minutes. That is the agenda for this evening. So the first case before the board is going to be 2022-01-01. Continuance of special permit. Jonathan Bombachi, being represented by attorney Christine Tree.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Mr. Chair. I had forwarded a letter, and I understand the very competent Mariela has already printed it out for you, so you don't need my copy, giving the monthly update on the progress. And the big news to receive is that we have received the building permit for the retaining wall that was issued on October the 15th. So that is great news, and I have checked off another milestone on our list as being completed. I will also say, before I go to the negative news, that the permanent buddy parking signs have come in, and they should have either been installed today or tomorrow in a permanent fashion affixed to the building near those two spots. And then we did have a positive interaction with Wakefield Commons on the prospect of using their parking lot for parking case of snow emergency over the winter.
Christine, which parking lot? The one immediately next to Pine Street or the one next to Cross Street?
So, I believe the corner that it's on is 100 to 200 feet from the property on the right-hand side as you're going toward the center of Gardner. And it's within that lot, which extends in the front and the back of that building.
Okay, good.
So preliminary discussions, but positive, and we're predicting we're going to be able to work that out as an alternative, which is great. Now, the negative news. So we have received three bids in response to the bid request that was put out, and they are substantially more than was expected. So the expected cost was $50,000 plus or minus. The cost to construct the original part of the parking lot, including the retaining wall, was $65,000, and this is an extension, a little bit farther down the hill, but an extension. And the three bids, the oral bid is $150,000, and the two written bids are $185,000 and I do have the written bids printed out here. I generally don't like to make that part of the public record, and because these companies have kindly issued a written bid, and I don't want to disparage them, I'm sure that they submitted a bid that was appropriate as far as their costs go. But if the board does want to see the written bids, I will pass them up without naming the companies.
Okay.
So the, I believe the more expensive one is on top, and then the next one down is there. And then, as I said, the $150,000 one was oral. And I'll give the board amendment to look at those before I go on.
Did that bid include the buddy parking to the right of the building? Was that included in the bid?
I believe so, because I think it included to the finished paving.
Because we keep commenting on the extension, and that's on the side, so that wasn't, I'll say, the extension. But I wanted to know if that was included in the price.
The proposal will certainly be to repave that area at the same time, so that all of the asphalt is done at the same time. And I would believe, but I would need to look more closely to see if that's set forth in the bid that is, the bids that are before you. I think they both refer to the plan, and the plan, of course, includes those two buddy parking spaces. So I'd give you a tentative yes on that with a, I would need to double-check to ensure that that is an accurate statement. What I will say is that the bid request specified that the work needed to be completed before winter set in this year. And although there's always, you know, increase in material costs from the last construction, increase in labor costs, the expectation or the analysis from the permit holder is that the reason these bids are so high is we're seeing, number one, the time compression in which to complete this work. Number two, the need where the bids are coming in right now to push other work off as a result. And third, that there is likely to be some unpleasant and dangerous weather in the late fall as this work is being done on that very severe slope in the back. The suggestion from my client is that the need is to cast a wider net with a longer time period to completion in order to bring the cost back into the realm of reality. And I would just, I understand that it's a condition imposed by the board, but this is three to four times the cost, and the cost is not small, to the point where I started to have a discussion with the client about whether it would be more cost-effective to reduce the number of units in the property, you know, which would require a modification of the special permit. The request to the board is that you allow the permit holder some time to, A, cast a wider net for bids, and B, allow more time for completion of the work so that it would start in the springtime season and be conducted then. And that we come back before the board in February or March with the requirement that at that time we would have secured a contractor and that we would have a start date for construction on this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, how much of this is predicated on hayward parking being allowed over there for a lengthy period of time? Because I assume that originally we talked about really only time of storms and those type of things. Is that what he's after, or is he wanting to have permanent spaces for some period of time?
Only storms, right. That's all that is suggested right now. That's what the board had been looking for at prior meetings.
But that was prior to you asking for an extension.
That was a report to the board on the past.
I understand.
We've had a discussion about, as we approach winter, whether or not to start, whether or not we can start, what would be the effect on existing parking. What's really driving the request for the delay is the massive cost that has been shown by the bids that we think can be improved with some time substantially. It may turn out that it can't be. But I'd ask that the permit holder be allowed an opportunity to look for some bids that are, again, a little more down-to-earth than what has been received.
Also, I think it might be useful if you can contrast the cost of, just say, the parking in the back versus the buddy parking. Because I don't believe we've ever heard any discussions about what type of work in terms of how extensive it was going to be, cost and so on. And that's always been kind of in the background, but I'm guessing that that may be a substantial part of this, too.
The buddy parking, and I'm giving you an answer based on my understanding, my review of the plan, my discussion with the permit holder, not one based on a statement in the bids that I have just presented to you. This is just repaving. So there's some, there's existing pavement in these two spaces that is definitely degraded and needs replacement.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely. And replacement of that pavement when the other portion is paved so that, again, we're paving at the same time, was always contemplated and is definitely looked at as part of the requirements of this special permit by the permit holder. Absolutely. There is, within the plan that was submitted, it was for the retaining wall and parking lot in the back because there was nothing, nothing in the nature of a retaining wall required on the side. Because, again, we're just improving existing pavement that has been definitely degraded from what it should have been.
Plus, that's a severe slope. I'd be surprised if there's not other work that has to be done on that.
When we did go visit the site, I remember mentioning that they were going to, I'll say, decrease the grade so that it wasn't so steep. And so that's one of the reasons why I asked the question if that was included, that buddy parking, because he had mentioned there was going to be quite a bit of work there to improve the grade, and so...
And so I'm bringing out the McKenzie engineering plan that was submitted last time to just take a look over in discussion. I don't see on this plan any retaining wall. The spots are certainly marked, but there's no retaining wall, and there's no regrading that is noted in that area. The topographical lines are drawn in, in the back, in the rear of the property for that area and not in the front, just the spaces are drawn.
Well, it's not really in our purview to really talk about what's going to happen there. It's just that we're repeating what we were told on the site visit, the extent of the work.
Can I provide to the board at the next written update a description of the work to be performed for those two spaces?
Yeah, that would be good.
Another question I have is that if you're granted the extension due to the price, and now we've come to that period of time and the price hasn't, I'll say, adjusted significantly, is there going to be another request? I mean, it seems like, whatever it is at that time, it's going to be done.
Yes, I agree. There's, I think making one attempt to cast a wider net, allowing more time to be worked into the schedule, has the possibility of producing a better result. But if we reach spring, if we reach that next February or March meeting, the price is going to be the price that has to suffer, and we're either going to be going forward with it at that point, or we will be presenting a request for a modification to the board, reducing the number of units, which is something that I've been talking about, not the permit holder, just looking at the cost of this being so, so high, so...
I have a question, Attorney Tree.
Yes.
Looking at, I call it the report card. If I follow it through, the actual, as built, submitted to get final city inspection on that driveway and everything is June 25th. That's significantly, that's what, eight months from now. If the board grants you, or the applicant, an extension, you know, to, say, March or February, you know, to secure a contractor, get it signed, get the contractor, can you still stick to the schedule?
I don't know the answer to that. It will depend on the contractor. But I will say that within the schedule, I did try to provide for the possibility of a winter delay. And so in item number 6A through 6E, which is the ongoing construction, it is 60 to 120 days. And that was to account for a winter delay. If we are starting in the spring, we are not going to have a winter delay opposed with always the possibility of an April Fool's Day snowstorm again. But I do not know whether we can comply with that June 16th completion date, but I will know that better once the contractor is secured in February or March. So I'm not asking yet to delay the completion date because I think more information is required in order for the board to make that determination and in order for me to make that ask, so...
Is the applicant going to go out for new bids or continue to work with the three?
Well, both. They will ask if there could be a difference in the price due to the change in timing, but they are also going to, as I said, cast a wider net for other bids in the meantime as well.
I'm just thinking, if it's going out again for bid, will the discussion include with coming into the, we'll call non-contracting weather? Will the discussion be that we're not going to start till April, so they can base a price on April going forward, or not, we need it, thinking they want, you want them to start in November? That will give you two different prices.
The request would be that the construction would start approximately April, when the weather allows, so that we would want to be in the beginning of the springtime projects, but we would not be shoving it in before the end of the year.
Okay. I do have one more question, and I'm going to hold it for now. Do any of my other members have any questions, Attorney Tree, at this point?
All right. Good evening. So I hear that what you're saying at the cost of construction has, the estimates have come in a lot higher than anticipated. I'm looking at one of these quotes, so they just got this at the end of September. So this is not a new issue. I think this issue has been ongoing, that the need to move that retaining wall has been there for an awful long time. And I'm just kind of curious as to why we're now crunching time and now you're requesting extended periods of time for us over the cost of the job. I don't think our avenue is how much does the job cost. I think our thing is why are you not just getting it done? Springtime could be more money because just the same reason why the cost has escalated now because of materials, whatever the case may be. You don't know what this cost of materials is going to be come springtime with all the disasters going on, flooring all over the place, the cost of blocks may increase drastically or who knows what. So it could cost more come springtime. So you're asking us to pause this on a hypothetical anticipation that it may be less than the springtime? And to raise point, we don't have an April estimate. We have what we think is a possible escalated price because they can get done in November. So we don't have a comparable to grasp, well, what would it really be in March or April, and what would the weather really be in March or April versus November? All hypotheticals. So then I have another question for you. That was kind of one of the statements. But the question, how many units are occupied in that building?
Eight.
Eight out of how many?
Eight.
So the building's fully occupied?
Correct.
Now, how many occupant permits do you actually hold?
There was, and this was discussed back in the beginning, there was a temporary certificate of occupancy that was issued that expired. The applicant has applied for a temporary certificate of occupancy for the building and for the unit. So, you know, both inspections, acknowledging that the permanent certificate of occupancy and certificate completion cannot be issued until this parking is completed. So there's no possibility for that permanent to be issued. That was reported back in the September meeting that those inspections had been implied for. We still await the inspections.
So two temporaries are issued, but yet the building's fully occupied?
It's correct.
Okay. So they're applying now to get temporaries, so the building is legally occupied under temporaries?
That's correct. We've applied.
Okay. And do they have an anticipated date when the building finally will achieve that, or?
The building department has not scheduled an inspection, and I checked in with the permit holder on that today.
So then a follow-up question. So now, based on the parking provided, how many units would that support as it's?
The existing parking is those two buddy spaces that are tandem on the right-hand side. The requirement under the special permit is for 11 spaces total. I believe that we had estimated that there are probably seven that fit in the space that is existing in the back, so, but it doesn't have the depth that is required in the plan to provide the last two, I believe. So there's supposed to be nine.
So if the parking spaces that are existing met the requirement of the special permit, how many units would that support?
Under the special permit?
Under the special permit?
They supported eight.
Because they were granted relief on the parking already?
They were granted relief on the parking, absolutely, because otherwise it would have been a 16-space requirement. They were granted relief on the parking, in the parking space. And I'm shuffling through my papers because I want to get to the special permit and be exact with my figures on you. 11 parking spaces. So when the conditions were outlined in the special permit, it stated there must be one parking space dedicated to each apartment and buddy parking in spots 10 and 11 on the identified plan, which brought us up to the total of 11 spaces.
So I gave you the total of 11, but how many exist?
Nine.
How many?
Nine.
Oh, nine?
Yeah, so I...
So...
And I'm saying approximately because there is no lining that has been done in the back. So the back is of appropriate width according to the plan. The depth is short. It was built short so that any parking spaces which required, were required to be on the side or required extra room for a turning lane, it's not there. And again, because it's not lined, we could look at it and see, you know, could we maybe fit more in a different configuration? Could we fit less? But the proposal here is to build out to the plan and establish the parking that was required under that plan. The permit holder, again, has repeatedly reported that there is only one of those tenants that parks in the lot. So that may not realistically hold for the future, but right now there is one tenant parking in the lot.
So let me approach this in a different manner. So there's no lines on back to designate that I have X amount of spots. If there were lines on back, how many vehicles could you theoretically fit that would meet the minimum size parking spots and still be able to get in and out?
Theoretically, seven.
Seven. That includes the two buddies?
No.
You got any more?
Well, I think this is going to be more of a statement. So if you only have two legitimate occupancy permits, which have already expired, which you said, so the building is, doesn't have any occupancy, so could you not adjust the occupant load of the building to match the parking available until springtime? Because you have a building that you are occupying that does not have legitimate occupancy permits. So why not adjust the number of tenants to match the parking that's available to get you to springtime?
I think adjusting the number of tenants is quite a euphemism for what is really going to go on there, which is a... which is evicting people from their housing. That is really what you are talking about. If you are going to talk about evicting people from their housing, that's a very serious matter. As I'm sure you know, because you are quite experienced in the building field, it takes quite a while to do that through the legal process. We have applied for the temporary occupancy permits. We are waiting the inspection on that. If the building department performs its inspections and finds for some reason that those units should not be occupied, that's a different question. This project, you know, certainly has proceeded, and I think, as the board knows, this parking issue has tried to have been resolved in a few different ways for a long time. And we are at the point where this issue with the back lot just has to be done. It just has to be done. And the permit holder fully acknowledges that, but is simply looking for some additional time to see if this quadrupled cost could be somewhat decreased. The cost that is estimated at the higher end, that would be half of the renovation of another building that could produce new housing in Gardner. It's not an efficient use of resources for the city. When there is a possible lower cost alternative out there, we should at least provide a little bit of time to see if that is viable. You know, as we all know, the state has started to emphasize housing over parking and looks at the cost of parking as, and whether or not it's a worthwhile expenditure of resources. I certainly am on the side of, people have cars and they need to park somewhere and we need to be realistic about that. At the same time, are there two cars for every unit in this building? There are definitely not. And right now, even though the parking is available, it's not being used by the tenants. So I would state to the board that what needs to happen is that the inspections need to happen so that the temporary certificates can be issued, not seek that we evict people from their housing. So, and I apologize, I don't mean to be strident on that at all.
No, no harm.
Okay.
Attorney Tree?
Yes.
You know, I appreciate everything you've put before us. I appreciate Mr. Hank's questions. He's got some very valid points. I do have compassion, however, it's minimal. Because this happened a year ago. And he refused to make the parking compliant. He actually came before the board for us to change our special permit to make it even smaller. And that was declined. So I mean, this has been in the works for actually over a year. The reason why it wasn't done, I don't know. It was never, I do know, it was the contractor's fault. That was presented to this board. And when things like that are happening, I look at it, it's not the contractor's fault. It's the site boss or the job, the applicant should be watching according to plans what's happening, having things signed off. Apparently that never happened. It was just, sorry, we missed it. And then he came to the city for relief. And the relief is not needed by the city to give it to him. Now, with all that said, I'm not at putting people out in the street. And those people are mostly low income. It's not like they've got a place to go to tomorrow. I know you're working on the permits. We've gotta get that done. Personally, I'm open to extending, but not what's requested here. I would like to keep you to the June completion date. Somebody's gotta put his feet to the fire and the contractors to the fire. So I would like to keep that day. And I'm gonna share, let my board members talk about this. But I would like to give no more than, January thirty first would be the last day that I would even consider finding a contractor. And I guess that my point is, the board's not worried about how much the contractor's gonna cost. We've got an issue here that we have to clean up that's been violated for, excuse me, over a year. And both times, the request came back, it's more money than I planned. If you're a contractor and you can't cover these costs, or sue the contractor who messed up and get reimbursed. So it's not up to the city to bail him out. You know, he has to have financial resources to cover this. And or else his investors have to come back and take care of this. So I mean, that's my thought is, like I said, I don't wanna put anybody on the street, especially coming into the winter. And most of these families have multiple children. So, you know, that's a thought in the back of my mind. But I guess I'm a little frustrated with how this has gone in terms of him coming up, doing this. It's too much money, I can't do it, giving extension. That's not our value link. That's his problem to solve. So that's why I'll solicit any of, you know, my members here. I put it on the table, it's no later than June, January thirty first. It's gotta hold to completion till just what's on your thing, six one to six sixteen. There would have to be, then it's signed off. But I mean, so it puts somebody's feet to the fire to get this done.
I think that we should add to that, that what is there available for parking should be lined if we're gonna extend. They should be able to use it through the winter and not have to walk two hundred yards to alternate parking. If there's space there, they should be able to use it right now.
I'm okay with that. Mr. Hank, you have any further comments?
Well, I'm gonna agree with you. And who actually created this? Okay. So there shouldn't be a reason to extend any timeline before, beyond June. This wasn't our asking of a timeline. This is what you put forth based on what your contractor gave as, I can get this done by these dates. So to your point, I don't see why, they really gotta not be coming back in June and saying, well, we didn't get this done, we didn't get that done. Could I get another three months or four months or kick the can down the road any further?
Well, that's my point is, if we give them an extra month or two months, they still hold to the June meeting, June completion date. But they have to work diligently during the time period.
So now your January timeline is for what?
Yeah, I had that question.
To secure contractors, have a signed contract.
Signed contract.
Regardless of the number.
So, and let me just, I'm gonna push back just a little bit. So number one, we came up with this timeline before we had a contractor because the board asked for it. The board asked for a projection of the timeline to completion. We created these milestones and a projected timeline. And from the beginning, when I presented this to the board, I said, you know, this is what we are gonna try to do, but we have to adjust for real world circumstances. That being said, we have met to date every timeline until we reach number four, which is finding a contractor and securing them.
Yeah, and I think number four brings to the forefront the reason, money and what the cost is. So I think, you know, cost to the applicant has always been the issue that has caused an issue. So now go back to my statement. If he's in the business, you gotta have the capital to get it done and move forward. And I mean, I think in any construction project, if they run into something, overruns, whatever, and they get it done. And maybe they extend a week or something. But I'm saying, we're extending a year here, and that's a long time. So I think, I'm not worried so much about what the contractor's gonna cost. I'm worried about what the contractor's gonna do and get it done on time. I just, as I go back to, I do not wanna put anybody out on the street. So I think this is sort of a compromise. We're not looking at putting somebody on the street. But we're putting his feet to the fire. Get it done, get your contract, get it signed and move forward and meet, if I'm liberal, meet the six sixteen date, not six one.
So I just want to be clear with the board on what the requests are to the permit holder, which is, we satisfy number four by proposed January thirty first. Is there any other item that is asked for?
Well, before I ask that, I wanna solicit any responses from Mr. Dave Van Tanger and Mr. Mel Hornet.
Well, the only thing I would, because I agree with the majority of this, is that I know that was discussed before, if they start construction prior to April, then the ability for anyone to park back there will be gone. And that's why that timeframe and solving the Heywood or wherever the parking ends up is critical. Because that could definitely impact everything here. If they don't have some latitude to park somewhere else and they shut down the parking lot altogether, this is gonna cause a problem.
If we are securing a contractor by January thirty first, they are not going to start this in the middle of winter. I just.
I don't think so.
I wouldn't think so either.
I think that Ray's, and I got one. I'm gonna speak for you, I guess.
Go ahead.
I think what Ray is getting at is, we would really like to see a signed contract by January thirty first for commitment of work starting at maybe the end of March or when weather looks favorable, but no later than maybe April first if they start construction. And you're a hundred percent complete by your milestone of June sixteen.
June sixteen. And I think that's what we're looking for, is a signed contract and then ready to go. And actually, you may modify this timeline, but don't modify the last date. It's June sixteenth. So the contractor may say, I might not have this done by May first, I'll have it done by May fifteenth.
Can I finish my note?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've got something to add to that.
Well, I know.
Well, the interesting thing based on the estimates is that contractor X can have this done in three or four weeks.
That's true.
So contractor Y or A, B, or C should be able to do the same timeline. So come springtime, they should easily be able to complete this and meet that June seventeen, sixteen. I was gonna give you an extra day.
Well, I guess my take on this is that, I think we've already resolved the fact that we expect it done by June, so we don't beat that to death anymore. I'd like to also add that when you start talking about constructing this thing, it's the lining of the parking lot. I just think we need to give some clarity that, and I agree, that you need to line this unless there's a very solid reason not to.
I would only say that when the extension is constructed, the lines are going to change. So I would suggest that temporary lining paint might be used for lining.
I think the asphalt's gonna change too. I don't think, they're not just gonna move that along. And so I don't, you know, so a means of identifying the parking spots.
Yeah, and we understand it would be temporary.
I would think that temporary paint would last throughout the winter.
Even if it's a spray can, it doesn't matter as long as it's lined off.
I have another question for you, Attorney Tree.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
If construction starts and people or vehicles are displaced, they can't park there now for some reason, they have to find another parking space during the upcoming winter period. Heywood Wakefield on Cross Street, I don't know if you're familiar with this, behind the big apartments that used to be Heywood Wakefield. They have a very large parking lot in the back. It is never filled, it's never half-filled. And I lived there for a long time, I saw it, it's never filled. Has any effort been made to contact the management of Heywood Wakefield? And I know it's not next door, but it's a lot closer than parking downtown or up on Washington Street. As for an agreement, a temporary agreement with a certain fee, you know, that they, the displaced vehicles can park there, let's say, from the snow date in the city to the end of the snow time in the city. So let's, I'm gonna use some dates hypothetically. November fifteenth to March thirty first, you know, nobody can park out. Has anybody made an effort to contact that management and ask or talk if it's a possibility? And if it is, I would like to see the letter that's sent to the management. And I'm gonna come hard, but I'm gonna say certified return receipt, that I know that letter went out. And if they respond, then we get the response of hopefully yea, not nay. But I think that's, I'm just saying, I know that parking lot is never filled. Now, I can't talk about plowing, but that would be something in the discussion with Mr. Bombach's company and yourself of how that could be taken care of. I'm putting it on the table as an option.
Okay. And I apologize, I just wanna clarify, I stated Wakefield Commons, I think it's, is that part of the same complex?
Yes, it is.
That's what it is.
And that was a phone call, so I don't have a letter. I would be happy, if you would like a letter sent, we can send a letter.
Wakefield Commons takes up most of the space on part of Cross Street and Central. When you go down Cross Street, you know, where Wakefield Commons, you're gonna intersect with Cross Street. You will see that parking lot if you turn onto Cross Street and look on your left, and it's across from a hairdresser's salon and Washington Street. So you can see that, that there's adequate space.
Okay. Very good.
All right. Any other comments?
No, I'm done.
David?
I'm fine.
Laurie?
All set.
I think I'm good.
You think you're good?
I think I'm good, yeah. And just for the record, I'm not for putting people out. That was just to kinda get into the point of, you know, you've had a lot of time. You've only had two occupancy permits to get and fill the building. That was my point, is that, again, I'm not for throwing anybody out. Everybody needs a house, everybody needs to work over their head. I hope they're all safe.
Okay, so I'd like to put a motion on the floor. I wanna make sure, and if I miss something, you speak up and make sure it's included.
Will do.
I would like to propose before the board that we give them an extension to January thirty first to get a signed, secured contract for the creation, for the completion of that lot according to the original approved special permit. Second, with the existing lot, have it temporarily lined so cars know exactly where they're going. They're not just parking haphazardly and randomly. You will, the third part, you will continue to go target the six sixteen, twenty-five date is completion. Efforts will be made to converse with the management of Heywood Commons to just determine if there's an option here to take care of the cars that really get moved around if the construction's going on. Have I missed anything?
I think you did pretty good.
Yeah.
You got most of it. You got most of it.
Most of it. I think, I think that's reasonable. I just keep going back, this thing's over a year old, so there's been plenty of time to get stuff done. And we're coming down to the finish line and we're seeing compression. You know, I mean, that's not the call of this board that caused the compression. So I think in good conversations with Mr. Bombachi, with the contractors, and hopefully Heywood, that all of this can be resolved in the same given timeline.
I hope for the same, Mr. Chair.
So here, motion to approve that.
Second?
So moved.
You did first. The second. Okay, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? No opposition? That's the extension we've given you and the caveats that go with it.
I thank the board very much. Could I take it that the next appearance in report before the board will be January or February meeting?
Yeah, I would like to see, let me just rephrase this. I don't have an issue with what you just said. I would say, like to see an interim report card. So let's say in the end of December, you've secured a contract and it's signed. So now when we come into the meeting in Jan or February, we'll know what's happened or is happening. we'll know what's happened or is happening. So I think it would allow the meeting to move a lot faster and quicker because if it doesn't, we've got a problem. Now we really have compression and we don't have any forward movement. And we don't want to see that happen.
Mr. Chairman, what are you looking for? Are you looking for her to send out or mail out a report card or come to a meeting?
I think you could, you know, connect with Mariella just with a letter and just want to update you what's happened. She can disperse it to us. And then we'll, we'll see, we'll hear everything for the finalization in the February meeting.
Thank you.
So I don't want to call you and Mr. Bombachi in every month between now and February. I think if you can just do an interim piece of correspondence, that will suffice. So really, we're continuing in our, we're doing an extension here to the February meeting.
Go ahead.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, board members.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in, and this is not an easy one.
No.
Thank you.
Chairman, should we have before she sign the extension form?
Yes.
Okay.
I will be happy to sign the extension form, but the statutory deadlines do not apply in a review case because the decision has already been rendered. But again, I'm happy to sign the extension form if the board wishes.
I have to be honest with you, I was looking for the form more than listening to what you said.
Said it's not needed. Said she doesn't think it's needed because it's an ongoing case. Decision's already been made and issued.
Yeah, the statutory deadlines apply before the decision is rendered on a review case. This is, there's no deadline for any particular decision to be made by the board. But I will happily sign the form if the board prefers.
Well, I think, I'll ask board members, I mean, we've got it here, we voted on it as part of the meeting and it's in everything, do you think it's necessary to sign the extension form?
I don't think so, but that's maybe.
I don't have an opinion on either side of that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Attorney Tree, let's sign it, so then we take care of everything.
Yeah, if there's no opposition on your behalf, just go ahead and sign it then.
There is no deadline that I could take advantage of.
Okay, Mary.
On the folders, they're green.
We're just trying to gather all the autographs we can obtain, you know?
Mine is a little difficult to read.
If we make it quick, you need to sign here. We'll fill in this, the applicant, the date.
Your trust is to do that?
I do, sir.
Of course you do.
For all your business, make a photograph, you just keep signing the one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Attorney Tree. Okay. Yeah, stay there. The next case before the board. Donald S. Foster the second, zero talc, get a F, parcel ID M17-8-8, relief to build a single-family home, variance. Agent or attorney?
Hi, I'm Rick Healy, I'm the broker of Foster Healy Real Estate, and I'm here to represent Jay Foster, that's his agent. What I have is a letter with permission to do that and a request to extend this. What we would like to do is, Mr. Foster would like to hire an attorney to see this through to the finish. We have not had a chance to talk with the attorney that we would like to speak with until a few minutes ago. So we're asking for an extension through the end of the year so that we can have an attorney continue this to the finish. And I do have a letter from Mr. Foster, signed by Mr. Foster.
Okay, we'll take that. Thank you, Mr. Healy. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Healy? I'll just read this first for the record.
Sure.
It's addressed to Raymond LaFawn, Chairperson, City of Gardner. Zoning Board of Appeals, 115 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass. Dear Chairperson LaFawn, please accept this as authorization for Rick Healy from Foster Healy Real Estate to represent me as my agent on my application for variance for zero talc. It is our intention to hire an attorney to pursue this process. We will be taking an extension through the end of the year to accommodate this transaction and allow the board adequate time to process. Sign, Donald Foster the second. I have a question.
Yes.
I've only read one variance for really.
It's for both variances.
Okay, so it's going to be for the both, both, and I just want to read the second one to include it in the notes. It will also include the variance for Donald S. Foster the second, talc, zero talc, get a F, parcel ID M17-8-8, relief on side yard setback. Now, I think during the discussion earlier, we do have side setback issues. I mean, the part for the residential use, that's fine, okay. I don't, not fine that it's granted, but that's clear. We've got side setback issues, so I'm going to assume, and you can correct me if I'm not right, that part of the discussions with the attorney are going to put a package together to address the side setback issues.
That is our intention, yes.
Yeah, and I mean, if, I don't know who you're going to select as an interning, but if they work with you and put a package together, so I think, and I always say this, Mr. Foster made a great presentation his first time, he was talking about grandfathered law. That's been settled, that's off the table now. If anybody wants to pursue it, they have to write through the courts to pursue it. But he really didn't address the neighborhood other than, I want to build a house, that's it. So we don't know the, well, I do know the geography surrounding it, but we don't have a lot of the facts, you know, in terms of the houses, what they are, what their setbacks are, any of that. I mean, it could be 15 houses that have the same setbacks that he's looking for. That's a different case. But none of that was presented to the board, so we're lacking a lot of data. So we're going to, I guess, put the burden on the selected attorney and you, and Mr. Foster.
We have begun that process and we intend to, we intend to give you the information you require.
Yeah, do you, you understand what I'm sort of saying?
Oh, absolutely. The burden is on the applicant to give us enough information to make an informed judgment whether or not we can grant any relief if that's what you're searching for. So we need a packet from you, your attorney, that gives us the information that we can review to make an informed judgment whether or not we can lawfully grant any relief on that lot.
Yeah, because to make a decision with a lack of information is not fair to anybody. And that's why we want to have as much data as we can, evaluate it, discuss it, and then go forward.
We understand.
So now, you want it to be extended to the end of December?
Well, we have not had, we have not engaged an attorney, and I just wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate amount of time. I know that you have requirements as to when you have to make a decision. Frankly, I didn't, I, we didn't, we didn't know the amount of time you needed. And we don't know the amount of time, we haven't, we have not yet engaged the attorney. So we didn't, we didn't know what to request except adequate time.
So in your mind, what do you think is appropriate time?
Well, I believe that you've, since you have both, since you have both hearings that have taken place, as I understand it, have been continued, I believe then you can go to the next meeting, but I, you have to tell me. And again, I have not yet engaged an attorney, so I can't give you that answer, I apologize.
May I make a?
You may.
So would it be feasible to grant them an extension to the next meeting and you can come in and request another extension at the next meeting if they're not ready? Or?
I think that's reasonable, but I would like to skip that and go right out to December. That gives him 60 days or gives the applicant 60 days to an engaged attorney. There's plenty of attorneys out there and they're all looking for work. And then they have to get going on getting their data. So really, and I'm not holding you to it.
Oh, yeah, we're in the middle of, we're almost the end of October, so, okay, I get you, yeah.
At the end of January would make more sense.
It doesn't feel like that right now, but.
I would, I would think that you would look for a little bit longer extension to January.
To the January.
Given the timeframe that we are now, you've got a lot of holidays coming up. There's a lot of reasons that you're going to get delays.
Okay, again, I, I'm going to rely on your wisdom, I apologize. I can't speak for the attorney and I can't.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
I'm speaking for Mr. Foster, but I can't.
If we give you continuance to January 31st, if you're ready to go before that, please let us know. So we can shorten the life, you know, put the candle out quicker and.
That would be wonderful, that would be great.
Yeah, I think we're trying to be a little liberal here in terms of, I think Mel's got a point, you know, that the holidays coming up. Who knows, attorneys like Attorney Tree is going to be leaving for a couple of weeks, so that causes some problems in some other cases. But we have to be cognizant of that and we want to be as flexible but reasonable as possible.
Appreciate that.
So now we have to get Mr. Foster to sign the extension agreement.
Yes, we do.
Now, can I sign it? I have the authority after this agent, so I guess I'm happy to sign it for him if that's acceptable. If not, I can get it, I can get it signed electronically tomorrow.
Well, I'm okay, he's his agent.
His agent, yeah.
Yeah.
He's acting on his behalf.
So we need a motion to.
The motion is to, I'll say, extend both variance requests of Donald Foster the second to the end of January 2025. Oh my God. Okay. At that point, you know, everything's got to be put to bed, so hopefully the January 16th meeting will allow enough time for all the data to be gathered. It also allows enough time for this board to make a decision within the parameters that we have to work.
I understand.
So the motion is to extend the application of Donald Foster the second for both variances to January 31st, 2022.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so moved.
Second.
Is it possible just to say something real quick?
Excuse me?
I just have a request of you guys in regards to the continuation.
I don't know, I can't give them.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask if, I know health-wise, her and I are not doing very well. We've been in a few times, I couldn't make it the last few times. I didn't know if it would be possible to maybe stress that everything be done by the continuation so we can finally put an end to this one way or the other.
I think what you're looking at, so I was just saying, is the meeting will be the third Tuesday in January, and that's going to be roughly, I'll say the 21st, I'll be off a couple of days. But the extension only goes to January 31st, so it's imperative the boards are going to work hard to try and render.
I just know, I appreciate your time, it's just, normally, but her and I are both not doing very well. It's a lot to come in here and sit. I wasn't able to make it the last two times. I feel that we have diligently come in every time requested and we get continuations and whatnot. And, you know, I know he's not around vacation and all that, but if we could just.
I think, you know, the board understands that and we try to be as prudent as possible with time, but not every case comes in cut and dry. And as I, I made a statement too, on my members a while back. We've been doing this for a long time, pretty easy for us. You are our customers. You don't know a lot about zoning. And it's a lot more complicated behind the scenes than just say, make a decision, yes or no.
Oh, no, I understand, but honestly, Foster Healy, real estate, he certainly knows lawyers and could have reached one by now.
Yeah, and we try to help and work with the applicants to work it through. And if you look at any of the YouTube videos, you'll see a lot of times we'll suggest that they withdraw because a little technicality and they could get it cleaned up. But, you know, you're our customers and we try to make it as easy as possible. It doesn't always look like that, but that's our goal.
And to that point, that's why we're requesting that whoever they hire for attorney gives us a really good packet that we can really evaluate and determine whether or not that lot we can grab relief on or we can't. You know, it's a matter of back gathering for us. You know, it's not just willy-nilly make a decision, it's, we need the facts.
It's not, it's not, it's not, you guys, it's more of the continuation.
Yeah, and unfortunately for us, we never know if an applicant's going to ask for an extension. You know, we come prepared to make a decision or review what we have in front of us and all of a sudden someone asks for an extension, which is within their rights, they're not ready. You know, they need time to gather more information and get a better legal opinion. So I wish you all well, I hope that you do well.
So we're going to wish you Happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas.
Happy Halloween, never mind, never mind, oh, Halloween's coming, yeah.
No, we look forward, our goal is to wrap this up at the end of January.
I can assure you that's everybody's goal, is to get this done as quickly as possible.
Okay. All right, any further questions? This was approved. Any further questions from the board regarding anything? Now, we have some minutes, I'm not sure if this corresponds, I'll find out in a second.
Did you want Mr. Healy to sign that extension?
I didn't give it to you, did I?
No, you didn't.
I'll be your right-hand man tonight, but not.
I've got to put somebody in charge of the extension.
If we all work together, we'll get, we'll run smooth.
I'll sign my name.
I got two sets of minutes and no cars.
Yeah, you're free to go anytime. Yeah, we're done talking about that issue. Have a good night.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Oh, Attorney Tree, I didn't see you hiding back there.
She's, she's just hanging around.
Ah, I think.
She's a zoning board groupie, is what she is.
That is true. We have, we call them zonies.
Zonies. They were the zonies.
Okay, the next issue before the board, we have some minutes. Hey, Margaret, we're looking for some approval.
Yes.
And the set of minutes I have here. Our four. I'm not sure, because another day, August 20th, 2024. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to read them. If you have any corrections, I'd like to hear it, the signers. Mr. Anteau? Laurie? Mel? And me?
Yeah, that was the hot person.
So does anybody have any comments, questions, or changes?
Not on that one, no, it's no.
Your motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second.
You didn't see them?
I'm going to do a quick read. I'll do a very quick read.
Ten pages, I hope we can go there.
Well, there's definitely outlines here, so.
All right, I'll move on to the next one, a site visit. And this is dated July 2nd. And the site visit was to Cody Hustleby on 81 Bigfoot Hill Road for the chickens. You want it?
Do it here. It's chickens.
It's pretty simple, I mean, we know what it is, you've read it.
Yes.
Your motion to approve this site visit.
So moved.
Say it.
Okay. Any discussion further?
No.
All those in favor of approving this?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, please sign.
Did Oak Street with Droff for tonight, I thought?
No, no.
It's extended.
It was extended to November.
November?
Yeah, the chicken one. I think, well, in my opinion, cook his own goose. You showed everything, you have a $9,000 chicken coop. Beautiful. So let's say this is proper, here's the. So let's say this, this is proper, here's the chicken coop.
Yeah, that's what they always stick around the edge.
Yeah.
When did they, did they send that at the last meeting?
I, I asked him to.
Chicken drivers.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't ask.
Here's the house.
That she couldn't make it.
Here's the property.
Oh, okay, okay.
And she, she's representing this. I moved to two of you in November.
Okay.
I mean, it's.
Now I remember.
Not like he had forty feet through his house.
Did you read the information Mariella sent out on it?
So.
No.
When I was in, the chickens were very careful. You know, I've been pushing for, I've witnessed for two years. I'm still pushing.
It shouldn't come here.
Yeah, Nathan Boudreau started, and then he went to Hubbardson to be the, uh, town administrator.
Oh, right, yeah.
So that died.
And actually, we could remove this.
And John Flick wrote a chicken ordinance for us. It was fifteen pages long. And it brought in that the Board of Health would have to inspect it every year and issue a permit, and the Board of Health said, I don't have the staff to do that, so, so we're still in no chicken land.
Well, with something like that, as you, they require you to have a manure management plan, so that you, you, you identify what you're gonna do with, where it's gonna be, and how you're quickly gonna move it, and if it becomes an auto issue, then they can cite you for it.
You know, and that's fine, but, you know, things like that, it's not up to the board to really give them.
No.
I need you here. Do you have any corrections to that?
Oh, she says she's good.
No, there's, Mr. Groziewicz probably would appreciate the new spelling of his name, but that's up to. No, we could.
Okay, thank you.
Ah, here's a, oh.
How about the next page?
Ah, there it is. Put you on a blank page.
That's all right. Laurie and I are together back there.
Okay, board members, I'm gonna ask, uh, if there's any other issues, comments, or et cetera before we move on.
I have none.
Done, Mel, Dave?
No.
I have one.
Do I hear motion or adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.